Proper channels, so we will proceed to a moment of reflection. And I hope that we will all keep our citizens that are affected by the COVID-19 virus, wish them well, and I hope that you will keep the thoughts and your thoughts and prayers with our first responders, all of our medical personnel, our health department people that are running the test sites, and all that are involved in that. So let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If you'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing no, we'll close that section. We have no public hearings, as is so reflected. Our consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of April 14th and April 21st, 2020, monthly bill list, one, two, three, four, five resolutions recognizing National Travel and Tourism Week, Nurses Week, Police Week, Public Works Week, and Emergent Medical Services Week.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda Adams has presented.
Have a second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Very good. Then, Madam Clerk, will you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks, is she present?
I am here, but I couldn't hear the question. I'm sorry. Can you please tell me what you were asking?
How do you vote on the consent agenda?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Do you really go through the moment of reflection and stuff?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't log in, so I just wanted to make, I wanted to make a motion and ask a question under the consent agenda, item B, multi-bills. Is that okay?
I have a motion in a second. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Randy, I noticed that there is a bill for $120,000 for falconry engineering about the park. Is that from existing contracts that really approved?
That would have been work that they've performed. That's part of, I guess, what was approved last year for the design of the park.
Okay, and do you think this will be the last bill related to this project for a while?
They are continuing to work on the design of the park. You know, we committed to that last year, and we do have an agreement with them in regards to the design of the park.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks? Councilwoman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is introductions and presentations. We have Chris Sanchez, Debbie Sherman Lee, and Mary Schnitzer to present regarding Christiansburg Institute's amended community support request fiscal year 2021 budget. Chris, I'll turn it over to you or whomever is in charge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate that. Could you all hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Fantastic. I'm just going to share my screen here in one moment. I'm going to control the power point from my end here. Can you all see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, it's an honor to be here tonight. We have a lot we'd like to share with you. We're very mindful that it's a whole new world for many, and it's a challenging time for many. And we'd like to update you and celebrate the Phase One of the roof project and kind of go over our revised funding ask to the town for fiscal year 2021. With me today, I have Ms. Debbie Sherman Lee, who is the Chair of our Board, and I have Marcy Schnitzer, who is our Vice Chair of our Board of Directors. And you'll hear a lot from both of them as well as we move through the presentation. I do want to note here, the image on the left is a picture of Debbie and other alumni, and it's going to be fun to let you know a little bit more about that photo later in the presentation.
Okay, and, you know, as you all know, COVID-19 has impacted our country and our community in so many different ways. But we want to emphasize that communities are coming together still. Our community is vibrant, and we're supporting each other in creative and innovative ways, and we are inspired. We know that COVID-19 has caused a great strain on everyday life. And, excuse me, just a second. And during these uncertain times, as a nonprofit, and all nonprofits are unsure of long-term stability, continued giving, and the measurable impact on daily operations, we, however, remain passionately committed to our work as a grassroots organization in serving the town of Christiansburg and the New River Valley. Is that it? Okay.
So when you're looking at the pictures that you see before you, the three pictures before you, we want to celebrate with everyone, our sponsors, everyone, to see that the roof is on, and we are almost, it's almost completed. There's a few more things that needs to be done for it to be completely finished.
Yeah, and to build off what Debbie has shared, those three images there highlight from left to right, a restored roof line that reflects the historic appearance of the building. And we'll get more into that later on in the presentation. In addition, in the center photo, we are showcasing the entirely new roof system with a new sub attic floor. There are multiple repairs that took place, but we're looking at a fully functional space with entirely new framing and an entirely new sub attic floor. And the image on the left there is actually the proper front-facing facade of the structure. That would be the south side of the building. And as you notice, we've preserved the original gable, that triangular feature on the top of that building. And you'll see some framing there that has not yet been painted in this image, but we do have images where the framing, the trim and the fascia has been painted. I'm going to move on to the next slide here.
Chris, before you do that, I do want to let the town council know that one of the members that was from the class of 53, I took her by to see that, and she was so happy to see. And the first thing that she said was, "It's back the way it's supposed to be." The roofing, all of that was back the way it's supposed to be. She was really, she was really happy about that.
It's very exciting. As you all likely know, and I know there are some new faces on town council, this project has been at it for decades, and this history extends itself back into 100 years and beyond into 1866. So this roof is symbolic of that revival and speaks to that history. It's a very powerful history we have right here in our backyard. This next slide, I think Debbie and Marcy will share a little bit more there.
Okay, when you're talking about the major donors, the government agencies, you all, Montgomery County and Town of Blacksburg, all of you all have made it possible to go ahead with this project and to get the roof done. I think that the 100-plus women who care, when I gave the presentation to them, and they were able to give us $12,500, and then the Secular Society gave $5,000, making it $17,500, was a big, was a big deal. And it pushed more people to want to give, including the government agencies. When you look down at the Montgomery County Retired Teachers Association, they also, after you all gave, and the 100-plus women and the Secular Society gave, they also wanted to be a part of this special history.
Yeah, and I think it's, to highlight what Debbie has shared, it's a powerful partnership between a grassroots fundraising community effort in partnership with multiple governments that represent the county, Montgomery County, the town of Christiansburg, and the town of Blacksburg. So we're really honored and proud to say that we have grassroots support in addition to the support of our local government. And so we thank you for really, really getting us to where we are with the roof, and we're excited about some next steps here. So this is the piece in the presentation. We're going to transition into some more focused area and analysis of the work that's been done via Phase One of the historic work that we do. I do really, really, really want to emphasize that actually only 2% of the over 95,000 entries on the National Register of Historic Places focuses on African-American history. And that means, then, that the Edgar A. Long Building falls within that 2% margin. So right here, the county seat, the town of Christiansburg, we have this national treasure that is rare also, in addition to its national value. This is a picture of the historic Edgar A. Long Building. This is the south side of the structure. You'll notice, again, the original gable. Later on in time, gables were added. We'll get more into that later. I do want to note, towards the left of the Long Building is Morris Hall. That was a magnificent structure. In part, it was a boys' dormitory. And we could talk a lot more about the history of CI. I know that a lot of folks here know already, but we're always happy to talk more about that. These two images here are actually students inside the building. We've got a classroom here, which was a science lab, and then we have students in the basement for gym class. So the first thing I'd really like to draw your attention to, on the left here, this is, the left image is the north and west facade pre-preservation of the structure. You'll see, highlighted in yellow, the two non-original gables. There's also, I'm sorry, was someone speaking? There's also another gable that was unoriginal. So there were three that were later added. What we did actually was to honor the building's historic designation and its landmark status. We actually restored the building to its original historic appearance. So the image on the left there will show that we've actually demolished those non-two original gables and dormers, and we've preserved the original profile of the structure. And as a reminder, because if it's historic designation at every level of this project, we are in close communication with the Department of Historic Resources to make sure that we're honoring all guidelines from the Secretary of Interior on rehabilitation. This is Ms. Debbie standing in front of the Edgar A. Long Building. On the left, you'll see there, again, that's the south side of the building, which is the proper front of the facade. Next to that, we're showing you that historic image of the building, and you can kind of see there how we've actually, again, demolished those non-original gables, and we've kept intact and preserved that original gable on the south side of the building. So this is really exciting and really, really beautiful. If you look at the left here, these images highlight pre-preservation, damaged trim, fascia, and what's called a rain table. This piece here, this member here is called a rain table. And what we were able to do with your support and funding and the community's support and funding is really repair, entirely new trim, new fascia. We have a new rain table, which you'll see here, that's been painted all around the perimeter of the building. We've got new trim, new fascia. So this water damage, this rot that you've seen on the left, all of that has been brand-new replaced. And we're really happy because we were able to work with Snyder and Associates, who's been doing incredible work on the project. They've done historic work at the Alexander Black House in Blacksburg. Team R Engineering was our structural engineer who got us the planning to get to construction. And then Friendly Structures LLC are the roofers and the window framers, I'm sorry, the roofers who did a lot of the roofing on the building. So this is actually, if we think about, we were just at the exterior of the structure, kind of looking at those historic features that we were able to preserve. Now we're in the interior of the attic space in the building. On the left-hand side is going to show you actually each dormer that used to be located on the building and what that internal system looked like in the attic. And you'll see, I want to highlight actually right here, this is the original brick gable. You'll notice these darkened members here. There was a fire that happened at CI on this building. We're still learning more about what happened. But actually, all of those burned framing members have been completely replaced, and we're looking at an entirely brand-new sub attic floor and roof system.
And I also want to emphasize, I mean, it's amazing in there, actually, all of you should have the pleasure of going up into the attic, because the stairs are so steep that it's really incredible to climb up them. But this has opened up so much actual additional room, surprisingly, in the attic. And the attic subfloor at one time was such that you could crash through it. It's now fully reinforced. I mention all of this because all throughout the construction, Chris and Debbie and I were driving by there every single day, and we were talking with the Snyder workers and supervisors. And they told us that there were seven layers of shingles on this roof, which apparently code now says, like, no more than two or three. All of that weight was bearing down and making this building extremely unstable. And so we're so pleased to have all of the structural framing underneath that brand-new roof, everything really restored to its original look. We couldn't be more proud of the work that's been going on. Okay. Is this one me?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry about that. So we have submitted a revised proposal. We felt that we had a great, we still feel we have a great deal of momentum coming into the year, and noticing the Huckleberry Trail, wanted to build on the work of Gay and Neil in terms of the walking path around the project. Obviously, that sort of work is not, not to be done right now. It's not the right time. But what is the right time is to move into exploration of our next phases, which, you know, we know, we have known is going to be the windows, the HVAC, the electrical, and so forth. Our proposal is really in three parts to launch this next phase. And the first is exploring Phase Two of Historic Preservation. So that represents $8,800 of the new budget we submitted, visioning for a conceptual master plan, and protecting the investment that the county, the town and the county and Town of Blacksburg have made through enhanced security.
Yeah, and I think, just to highlight these three key areas, we actually decided[1173.20][1173.23]intentionally to focus on these three key strategic planning and protection areas. Our initial funding request, as Marcy had stated, was $80,000. We have scaled that down to $15,000. And this is really what we determined based upon input from our building committee, experts in the field, kind of guiding us through this process. This is what we know we need next. And I really, really want to emphasize that this is an exploratory phase. When we think about brick and mortar and getting to a hard cost for any phase of the building, there are always soft costs. There is always pre-construction. There's always a significant bit of planning that goes into getting us construction ready. So I think it's really important that we state on the front end, we are exploring Phase Two, and we'll get more into that as we move forward in the presentation. Now, Phase Two, we are looking as a continuance, of course, of Phase One, which is to make the building weather tight and seal the structure, right? So we are focusing on all 52 windows on the building, the two exterior doors on the building, and we're looking at what we're calling the skin of the building, the brickwork there. There are sill holes for pests and water elements to enter the building via the brick on the structure. So this phase right now is continuing Phase One to keep the building protected and to keep it envelope tight. Right now, we are here. You'll notice a magnifying glass in our new logo. We have met with contractors in the window framing field. We've done three site visits with a particular contractor in the window framing field, who actually also specializes in historic preservation. They've done work at the Alexander Black House. This will not be the only contractor that we will pursue. Much like we did the first phase for the roof, we will be going through competitive bidding process for pre-construction. That is where the 8,800 request to the town for fiscal year 2020 is of tremendous value, and that is our ask. That's where we would use that funding to start phasing out pre-construction to get us to a hard cost. You'll see here, it's sequential. So once we've got a bid that we're comfortable with, we'd like to move forward with. Now we're looking at getting a hard cost for construction. And those are later steps. This is a process that took us about two focused years in kind of a new season of CI to get the roof done. So we know what we're doing, and we're very patient with that beautiful structure because it's so precious and deserves the attention that we're giving it. So we can talk more, perhaps, about these next pieces of this next phase. But right now, we are in the consultation phase in moving towards a competitive bidding process for pre-construction. Now, to talk about the visioning, this represents $5,000 of that $15,000 revised funding ask. We are very excited to have been in communication with Hill Studio in Roanoke. I think the council and the mayor are familiar with Hill Studio. They actually do specialize in historic preservation. We had a meeting with David Hill and other folks there in the architecture team last week, and prior to that, we had conducted three site visits over about a year and a half timeframe. They have given us a proposal for consideration. What we really, really, really know, and what we really like about that proposal, is that it's focused on some key areas that allow us to meaningfully and equitably engage with our stakeholders. That would be the town of Christiansburg, Montgomery County, the town of Blacksburg, and then the CI organizations. So this would be an opportunity for all of us to come around this work of the building and really start nailing down specifics in terms of the use of that building, its adaptive reuse, design features, concepts. These are really important next pieces, and we really, really want the town of Christiansburg to be a part of that process with us moving forward. So $5,000 of the funding that we've asked is to help us fund a proposal with Hill Studio. We will match that funding to get us to the $10,000, and we're very much excited about that.
So we are, we're very excited about this project moving forward, and I wanted to focus in on this particular diagram. So the larger map on the outside is actually the extent of the Christiansburg Institute property at its peak. And so if you look towards the, Chris? Oh, sorry. If you look towards the bottom in the red circled areas, that is the Christiansburg Institute property and the Christiansburg Institute Principal Cemetery. And the inset is a map taken directly from the Town of Christiansburg site, which marks where the Huckleberry Trail path is. And I wanted to show that in proximity to actually the historic Christiansburg site, because we represent-
I'm going to ask you all, if you would, please, to wrap this thing up in about five minutes. Normally, in presentations, we have 10 minutes. You're now 20 minutes into a 10-minute presentation. So if it's not considered rude, we need to keep our schedule. Thank you.
Okay. So the inset is the Huckleberry Trail, and it shows its proximity, actually, to the Christiansburg Institute campus. And so as you can see, this cultural heritage represents a significant part of the midtown development. And we note that the extended Huckleberry Trail, according to your site, allows residents to walk or bike. And the town has developed an area plan for midtown to support passenger rail, creating synergies in the area of transportation, tourism, conference center capacity, and aquatic center resources. And so we are very much looking forward to partnering with the town, you know, hand-in-hand with this midtown development.
I'm going to start to fly here. I did not see a timer. I did not know where we were in the presentation, Mayor. I appreciate that reminder. It is not rude. We do want to honor council's time. We know you have a lot to discuss. The last piece here, built into the presentation for revised funding ask, is security and protecting a national treasure. The building has experienced vandalism in the past. It's located on a dark road. There are no cameras there, and we now have a nearly $200,000 restored, brand-new roof. We've had break-ins in the past, so we're asking for a small amount of funding to help us buy some basic motion-sensored lights and cameras to really bring increased visibility and protection to that building. Marcy, we got to breeze through this piece here.
Yep. So we wanted to show you the total of funding. So our total raised is actually $197,000 and $247,000, of which you can see our local governments make up a large part of, and that our private donors represent about 15% of this. So we estimated $150,000. We knew it would increase. We had a couple of change orders. Chris, if you go to the next slide, reflecting rot that we did not anticipate. So this total cost of $197 and change, we have covered totally with the town's contribution, the counties, the Town of Blacksburg, and private donors. We have covered it all. And the inset here is an example from our monthly bill that describes everything that we have spent funds on.
Very quickly, you all know who we are. There are some that may not know, but we are a 501(c)(3)1 nonprofit located in Christiansburg, Virginia. We were created by our parent organization, the Christiansburg Institute Alumni Association, in 1996. We sustain a two-person paid staff, myself, full-time as executive director and a quarter-time public historian. But our team is comprised of highly dedicated work-study students, interns, community volunteers, and board members. We do a lot outside of historic preservation. I wish we had more time to share that with you. I think you would be very interested. In addition to historic preservation, we do tours of our buildings and property. We do cultural programming and events. We do museum and archival services. And year-round, we partner with various organizations through community outreach and education. This past year, we've experienced a lot of success. Here is a list of some of what we've experienced. I don't have time to get into any detail at this point. These are photos from some of our cultural programming that we do offer. This was a great event here on the left-hand side. You all sponsored this event and helped make a part of it possible, and we really thank you for that. We offered the community free food. We have a huge barbecue, live music, which was mostly comprised of alumni themselves, which is very special. At the very end of that program, you'll notice here in the top-left-hand corner, alumni who were there gathered and recited their alma mater school song. And right now, we are engaged in an online petition of support. Right now, we have over 700 signatures to help us restore the building. I would invite town council to sign that petition. We welcome your support. There is a link there included, if you'd like to sign. And on the left-hand side here, people who do sign are able to make comments. These are comments that, in part, that we've seen from people who believe in this history and want to help us preserve this national treasure.
And I would note, that's 700 signatures since Sunday.
Yep, very quickly. Yep. And again, we thank you, town council, Mr. Mayor, the community at large, for all your support in this monumental project that we're so excited to be moving forward with. with, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I am so glad that you guys came back to us with a different amount request for this year under the community support. I will also encourage you guys to apply for community fund from New River Valley. They're giving out grants for nonprofit organizations. And I also would like to help you and donate a painting to Christiansburg Institute to see if you guys can raise more funds for your, for your building. And just in the future, I would like to also help you create some art for the Christiansburg Institute. And I, I am really grateful that you came today, and thank you for joining us tonight and for giving us the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
I would, I took a tour of the building. How long ago was that, Mike? Four or five years ago?
I wasn't with you, brother, I don't know.
Yeah, and it appears that you've done quite a bit of work. If you're going to be giving tours anytime in the near future, if you would, give me a call, and I'd like to come down there and, and take a tour.
We are eager to get back in that building and give tours.
And in the interim, what we're doing because of this new landscape with the COVID-nineteen is transitioning our work as a nonprofit to the digital space, right? So we're looking creatively into what we can do online. Part of that will include immersive virtual tours, not just of the building, but our museum and the CI Principal Cemetery.
Thank you very much.
Other thing I had on my mind, for the windows, I feel that's very important, and to get a lot of bidding on that, and it looks like you're gonna spend about nine thousand dollars on different bids, can you just actually put in, just go in and put the windows in without, without bidding scale?
You know, Mr. Hubbard, I really appreciate that, that question, and it deserves a very long answer, but I'll do my best to be concise. This building is historic, it's rare in it being historic, and we need to be very careful about how we approach any physical alterations to the building. We've already met with one window framer, that window framer said to us that it's extremely important that we have an architect and a window framer go in the building and individually assess each window, because right now they're covered with plywood. Removing that plywood may damage that window. So we're looking at which step makes sense first, but we know we can't simply just put funding to a new window. We first gotta really honor the building and figure out each window and where it's at in its rehabilitation process.
Well, we couldn't do it and maintain our historic designation status for the building. We, the windows have to be done according to the Department of Historic Resources standards. And we did have also, I mean, we have met with actually a total of three contractors who've looked at the windows. They emphasized exactly the process that we're going through right now, that we have to have the windows fully assessed. One gave an estimate of a hundred thousand dollars, but he was not knowledgeable about the historic resources needs, and so we do feel it'll be higher than that with this process, you know, we can get much closer to what that would be.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none, we'll move on, and thank you all for your, for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the opportunity.
Thank you.
We have, we've not received any citizen comments tonight by the instructions. We'll move to committee reports. I am not aware of any committees that have met, however, if you have met in an official committee capacity, feel free to tell me about it now, tell us about it now. Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion and action by mayor and council. Town homepage, COVID-nineteen community support web banner, Mr. Showalter, that's yours.
And mayor and council, this is just a carryover line item, or agenda item that we talked about a couple weeks ago in our work session, about how we can get these, these organizations that directly support our community, get them some more press. And we, I thought at the end of that meeting, we had decided we would do a banner on our webpage, like we do most banners, and, and point out those organizations and what, and their links, and especially those links where people can donate to them.
Very good.
So it's on the-
With council's permission-
Haven't done yet.
With council's permission, I will assign that to Mr. Warren and Ms. Demant, and hopefully we'll have something up-
I believe we have, I believe we have that page five now.
Oh.
But if you have anything you'd like to add to it, definitely feel free to let us know. But I think we activated it this week.
It looks really nice, Randy.
Okay, so we're semi-good to go on that one.
Like I say, if, if there is anything to add to the site, definitely please let us know, and we'll, we'll certainly add to it as far as community resources.
Okay.
Randy, was that, is it part of one of our banners? Either I'm not-
It is. I, I think it comes up as the second banner.
Okay.
But Showalter, I'm, I'm sorry, you have to click on the homepage thing, and then once you click on it, it drops off to all of the options and all of the different resources. So that was actually well done. I do think that I encourage people to also check it out, it's actually, it was, I think there's a lot of resources in there for people to check it out, including the New River Community Auction. They have an easy webpage to use, the link is there, I saw it, it's easy to donate to them. You can also donate with a credit card with them. Me Keep seems to be better if you make appointments with them, or if you make a drop-off donation to them, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Henry, is that okay? Randy, I'm sorry if you have some.
We can share a screen, if you'd like to take a look at it, but.
It's okay, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is recognition of Christiansburg High School twenty-twenty graduating class, Mr. Showalter.
That's me again, I'm sure we've all heard about a lot of parents in our community wanting the town and the county, especially the county and the school board to do something to recognize the students who are getting ready to graduate, who are foregoing things like prom and, and graduation. So I think there are some items being worked on through MCPS and hopefully Montgomery too, also the PTA. But I was just wondering, something that's much like we did with the COVID organizations, is putting a banner on our webpage congratulating the seniors, and really links to the social media pages that actually highlight the seniors that authorize to have their information out there, and I, I'm hoping everybody has seen those on Facebook and Twitter, because they're really done very well. And it's just something small, it, it's something very inexpensive we can do. And of course, I would recommend that we put up the, the light pole banners, and possibly just go every other banner with the, the Christiansburg High School one, and put up our, our Star Spangled flag one, every other one, because I do know Memorial Day is this month, and also Flag Day is early next month. So I would like for council to entertain those two items that we could recognize and honor our, our seniors in our communities.
I'm fairly certain that that project is gonna happen on the flag, on the pole banners. I think they're just finishing up most of the town cleanup, and you'll have, and I think Public Works full cruiser back. I'm sure that Randy will be in touch with, Mr. Lance needs to make sure that's done within the next four, five days.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I had a nod.
Thoughts on the, on the webpage banner, much like the COVID organization?
I think it's great.
Put out there?
I, I don't see any problem at all with it. Again, if it's not in the works, I'm sure that Melissa and Andrew can come up with something fairly quick.
Yeah. Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Very good. The community tilling program, Mr. Waynefield.
Yes, you saw information in your packet in regards to that, I just basically want your final approval on that document and how we'll manage it. Again, it is only open to nonprofits, I think it's maybe simpler to manage that way. If, if it does look like it's, you know, maybe not too much of a burden, maybe we do consider opening up to private sector, but for right now, I think just try to manage as nonprofits, but I just think it's kind of a nice thing to do for the community.
Randy, I'm sorry, Brad, go ahead.
No, no, I looked at that, I think it's great, I think it's a, a great gesture to our business community and our community as a whole, so I'll support that. I don't know if you need action or what's exactly required.
I think I could probably begin it as a town program, I just kind of wanted, you know, if you have a general consensus approval, that's fine, if you have any issues with it, definitely let me know.
Do I have anybody with any issues at all?
I think it's great.
Okay, so that's kind of an unofficial thumbs up.
Yeah, Randy, Randy, I don't have any problems with it, good idea.
Very good idea.
Okay, very good, so we'll move on, and Randy, if you'll move your page down a little bit. Staff reports, town manager.
Yes, have a public hearing to set for the lease of four fifteen Cambria Street, this is that row, the row furniture building, we would have to have a public hearing for that. I'd like to set that for the next council meeting, May twelfth. We will have to take public comments for that, so we'll have to make some allowance for that.
Okay.
Also, I just want to let you be aware that Blacksburg Transit, there is money available through the CARES Act for operations, and they're willing to use some of that towards the operations of the commuter route. So we won't have to make any cuts, and we wouldn't have to cut the commuter route this year, thanks to that, them kind of contributing some of the CARES operating money that they've received towards that.
So is that Blacksburg Transit's CARES money?
Yes, correct.
Does not affect what we get as the town?
Correct.
Okay.
That's wonderful, Randy, thanks for sharing that.
Sure.
So Randy, that will mean we can continue our current funding level and still have the same level of service without having to pay the difference.
That's correct.
That's fantastic. I got an email actually today from a citizen that was talking about the importance of that commuter route, so I'm very, very, very happy to hear that, thank you.
Absolutely.
What else, Randy?
Just want to, I guess, check status, but are you looking at having a budget work session next Tuesday, or would you want to hold off on that for a longer period? Also, I guess, check status of when we'd like to have the public hearing for the budget. We were originally thinking May twelfth for that, I guess personally, I'm thinking May twenty-sixth might be more appropriate to shoot for, for public hearings, the budget. It, it takes a seven-day notice for that, and it takes two readings of the budget, so you can't vote the night of the public hearing. But if you had a public hearing on, say, the twenty-sixth, you would be able to vote the first meeting in June.
Or seven days after that public hearing.
Or, or seven, or seven days after, correct.
Okay. Thoughts, ladies and gentlemen, twelve?
I'm, I'm fine with moving ahead expeditiously, if the, the less than one-half of one percent of the budget is the community support. Randy and Val, have you received all the follow-up tallies?
We're missing, we're missing two still.
You're missing two? Well, I would suggest that council members get those in, and I'm fine with moving ahead as quickly as you feel possible. I think y'all have done a great job, and I am looking forward to going back in October and revisiting some of these other issues, because I know they're important as well.
Can I ask for clarity, please? Are we going back to every one of the applicants, or just the ones who requested a change?
At this point, only the ones who have requested the change. Val and I did have that discussion following the last work session, and I guess the only member who necessarily expressed support for going back and contacting all the prior applicants seemed to be you. If, if there's consensus support for that, we'd certainly do that in, in the coming week or two.
There's only one request of community support that was not funded, it was not funded last year. Everything else has either been funded or is under consideration, and that one funding was the Brain Injury Services, and it was fifteen hundred dollars. I don't know, I mean, I don't, fifteen hundred dollars on what we're doing is not a major amount, if, if, if we see what's going, if, if you're interested in doing that, that way everyone that, that was, that requested funds this year have gotten funds, if we approve what we're looking at down the road.
Okay.
No, it was not on the vote. Once we get that out, I will send an email asking your consensus or your thought on that one other item. But that does fund everybody, and it saves, it's about fifty thousand dollars less than what we funded last year, and about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than what the original request for twenty-twenty-one were.
We have a work session.
So we good to go?
Well, I would say with that, and if you get the tallies in, I'm fine with not having a work session, if we need one, so be it, but if that's the only outstanding issue, then I would say take the tallies and be done with it. That's my opinion.
I concur with Brad as well.
All right. You want me to, once we get the final tallies in, do you want me to mention the other one that, that was not funded, was not, was not funded last year, was not funded this year?
I'm, I'm fine with not mentioning it, they've not been back to talk to us, that I can recall in two years, so whatever council's pleasure is, but I say we move on, if there's only one, I don't, I don't want to hold up the caravan for one request.
A fifteen hundred dollar request, yes, okay.
I'll support Brad on that.
Okay. Randy, what else you got?
Just clarify, I think I'm hearing no, no work session, and go ahead and advertise the budget for the twenty-sixth public hearing, correct?
That's, that's what I thought I heard. Now, in the interim, if there is a question that comes up, we can schedule a work session. We have almost a month, we have exactly a month from tonight's meeting till we have the public hearing, so there is time in the interim if we feel we need to meet further on it.
Okay. And just to let you know, I have all the chiefs available, if you have any questions, I'll just let them speak.
Let me get through, let me, let me get through the town attorney, if he has anything, and if not, then we'll open it up to the chiefs to give us an update on the, the COVID-nineteen programs and everything else that's involved. So, Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
No, mayor, I don't have anything to report.
Thank you very much, okay. I'll turn it over now to Mr. Chief Sisson, Chief Hanks, and Chief Coyle, if he's on board with any updates, in no particular order, so Chief Hanks, how about we start with you?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here tonight. So far to date, I know Chief Sisson's got more information, but so far to date, we've tested sixteen hundred and twenty-nine people. We only have fifty-four cases in Montgomery County present, eight hospitalizations, and of course, one fatality from the COVID, which is sad, but we're still-
There was a pre-existing commission, there was a pre-existing condition with that gentleman, I think.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not real sure on that, mayor, but definitely, you know, any, any time we lose someone, it's a, it's a sad day, but especially with the COVID stuff. But we're continuing to test, we'll be at the New River Valley Mall site tomorrow. Testing, we'll be back at Blacksburg High School on Friday. Testing planned is next week, tentative next week was to go on Wednesday to Giles County, but I think we're gonna bump that up possibly to Tuesday, and then back to Blacksburg High School next Friday, thirteenth of May, I believe, it might even be the twelfth of May, we'll be at the City of Raff for testing, and, and that should, should pretty well get us through every locality that is in our health district for this task force. We've had overwhelming support from all the stakeholders in, in the region and, and all the other departments that have helped us with this. I'll turn it over to Chief Sisson.
Thanks, Billy, I think you covered most of that. The one thing I will mention, and I know we have citizenry that watch this, and those test sites are still available to- to citizenry and it, since day one, our process has been a direct call to the New River Health District and that phone number is 540-267-8240. So this robust testing process has come out of the task force, which, you know, as I've stated in the past, it's remarkable that uh, this region has come together as we always do during times of crisis. Uh, we're notorious in this region for making it happen. I, I asked Randy to send the task force organizational chart to council members. If you have looked at that or you have questions, feel free to reach out to me. But I wanted him to send that out specifically because it shows uh, how broad this process is. Uh, in emergency services during critical incident, we rely on the incident command system. And what you see in that organizational chart is an incident command system. Uh, the regional partners that you see there, you, remember that we've been, this task force has been formed just over a month. And to be able to bring the amount of resources together in this region will absolutely um, send us into a recovery effort. And obviously, that's our goal as a task force. Obviously, we're gonna continue testing. Uh, but our ultimate goal is we need to recover as a community. And I feel very confident that this task force and the work that's being conducted every day is going to expedite the recovery uh, of our communities. So with that, you know, Mr. Mayor and council members, you know, best of health to you and our citizenry. Continue to practice hand washing, social distancing. And as a community, we're gonna get through this and we're gonna be stronger than ever. And from an emergency service standpoint, we, we personally appreciate the support from our governmental leaders. So we appreciate that and thank you.
Chief, can you give us an update on the Feeding America program?
Absolutely. Uh, the Feeding America program that came to Christiansburg High School last Friday was just a remarkable uh, opportunity for this area. And talking about the incident command structure, just to show, you know, we've already built in, you know, in the planning and recovery phase, you will see that in this document that we've assigned. You know, we have the New River Community Services, our New River Valley Community Services as our lead on the feeding program. So how that ties in, Feeding America reaches out, say, we would like to come to Christiansburg. So we already have that built into the model. Uh, so we, we get the phone call, we set the logistics up, we make it happen, we serve over 1,170 people in a, in a two-hour span uh, without a hiccup. And that's a very good thing for our community because people, people are obviously struggling and it's our job to provide those resources. So phenomenal program, you know, obviously we've invited them back to our community because uh, it's just, it's a great thing for us. So we're happy to be a part of that and we've rolled them into our task force group, so we know that'll be a productive event in the future as well.
Very good. Chief Coyle.
Yes, Sam here.
I just wanted to tell you, you know, how much I appreciate you giving me the uh, the overlook the other Friday when I went over there and uh, it really is impressive of how you're handling it and uh, how the, the cars go right through and it's a, it's, it's just a, just first class with both, what you guys are doing.
Thanks, Steve. Chief Coyle.
I, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was connecting. I don't think I have video. Uh, so from the rescue standpoint, EMS standpoint, we, we've been the beneficiary of the, the hard work that the task force has been doing, emergency management, Chief Hanks. Western Denny EMS Council, Department of Health. We're at a pretty comfortable level right now with our personal protective equipment. That was a big concern for us starting out. Especially with the specialized masks that we have to wear with certain patients. But right now, we're pretty comfortable unless we see a spike in calls over the next couple of months and we're not anticipating that. Uh, we think we're gonna be pretty good on the protective equipment. Our call volume overall is down and uh, we, we kind of uh, correlate that with people being reluctant to go to the ER right now. But we all know in medicine that that's gonna kind of boomerang. And we're gonna see an uptick as, as people are starting to go back to the ERs. But right now, we're holding our own and we really appreciate uh, all of the sentiments, uh, Chief Sisson, Chief Hanks, appreciate the support from town leadership. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Job well done, gentlemen, on all three levels. Okay, uh, council reports, uh, Mr. Stipes. Brad, are you muted or you have anything?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm gonna unmute. Uh, I have uh, no reports except to say I do appreciate the update from Debbie Sherman Lee and Mr. Sanchez about the progress at the Ed Gray Long Building. I think it is a treasure, that and the uh, Hill School and the Community Center. I think uh, I think we're doing the right thing. Hopefully, council will support the continued progress on that building and that becoming a community, a community node for the Huckleberry Trail. And also to preserve uh, the historical experience at, at uh, that building and also uh, the Community Center. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw Walter?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Hubbard?
Ms. Hicks, I would like to just sort of apologize to you. For last uh, Tuesday night, I asked you if you had been to the water plant. And I think that you misunderstood the water plant that I was speaking about. And the one I was speaking about is near the Radford Arsenal. And I think if you can get, I don't think that you've had a chance to see that. And uh, Randy can maybe set you up on a tour and uh, have them go through and show you what they have. And I think that after you do that tour, you'll have a whole new opinion about the, the status of, of water here in Montgomery County.
Anything else, Mr. Hubbard?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, I'll be with Mr. Stipes as far as the CIA building. You know, in the past, I was very hesitant about giving them money, but I can see they are using the money correctly. And I would continue to support them and hopefully send it with the community center. That's all I have.
That's awesome.
Ms. Sax?
Yes, the, the only thing different than what anyone else has already mentioned is I have had a few citizens comment that um, recycle is overflowing because they're using more of being home. So I just wanted to throw that concern out there for any possible consideration if we have a solution. Thank you.
We'll work on it. Thank you. Mrs. Hicks?
All right. I will start out with um, under the Shaw Walter item that he was talking about congratulating the class of 2020. I do want to also congratulate the 2020 class graduates. I would like to invite a school member council um, to bring the name list of graduates so we can read each name out loud to acknowledge them. Or the member can read them out during an agenda meeting. Maybe we can have them uh, come out and maybe provide a list to us. We can read the names or somebody can read the names of these greatest students that are graduating from our high schools this year. And um, so that's great right there. I also have another item here. I would like to ta- thank our rec department and other departments for putting together our virtual recreational center on site under christiansburg.org backslash virtual rec center. It seems like um, from what I heard from um, Brad Everly, that is one of the first ones around here. That, that are able to provide the, under our website page for our citizens, I encourage people to go and visit it. It has many resources for all kinds of people. It has uh, resources for children, adults, seniors, learn at home, home gardening, staying connected, parents and children. Please go and explore these great resources and have fun making memories and find fun things under there. I also want to continue to thank our essential workers. Please um, and thank you Feeding America for everything that they have done for us, providing all those meals for our Christiansburg citizens. I welcome you guys back and I know we all welcome you back. So thank you for that. And uh, be healthy and safe and thank you for, for everything that you guys are doing right now.
Very good. So then you threw, is that all?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Other than to piggyback on about everything all of the council members said, uh, I guess I should say segue in honor of Mr. Hall, but anyway. Uh, I think that, that our workers and our staff and our, in our first responders and all have done a fantastic job. I know that uh, I continue to hear a few things from people, well, they didn't get this or they didn't pick that up. We're still picking up items for uh, from the cleanup and I imagine we will uh, for another week or two. But all the town staff is back and hopefully we'll get back. I heard the Friday afternoon, the Friday garbage truck people were finally cleared to go on their garbage truck run at four o'clock that afternoon. So I know they put in extra hours getting all the trash, but uh, it was pretty, pretty big effort. So with that, is there any other business to come before council?
Mad, I'd just like to make a comment. Uh, Marissa mentioned the recycling. Randy, do we have any drop-off points still open?
I believe the high school is still open, but I think that's.
I saw that today.
Is the uh, Food Lion Center still open?
No, it closed this week.
Okay.
La- last week.
So the high school drop-off point is still open?
Yes, yes. At, at least it was last time I was there. That was probably a week or so ago.
It was, it was there today, so that's why I was asking. So.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I would assume that if um.
We were planning on closing one per month, basically.
Right. Yeah, we may want to delay this one if people are having issues with their recycling overflowing, they you know, if we would direct them, if they reach out to us that the high school is still open, so they could run their overflows up there.
Yeah, for some reason, I thought that one was remaining open. Is that, is that uh, is the high school not remaining open, Randy?
They had requested that we had and we haven't had a committee meeting since then.
Okay, I would.
We may too. Yeah, I, I'm certainly willing to delay it.
Yeah, I would, I would, uh, I've heard from two uh, folks on that, about that, and I thought it was staying open. And in fact, as far as the corrugated cardboard, that was one, uh, that was one request that at least to have an enhanced corrugated cardboard repository there, since we have some of those extra containers. Ms. Sax and Mr. Shaw Walter are that committee, but I would recommend, or from what I've heard, that, that, to, to retain that repository and also to maybe even enhance it as far as uh, cardboard goes would uh, be a suggestion for them to consider. But I'll accept whatever they recommend, but that, I have heard from two people on that. Both of the names you would recognize that are uh, supporters of that. Thank you.
I'm, I, I, Brad, I have to remind you, we brought this to council and because of the um, people dumping trash even at the high school one, really every one of our drop-off sites have had a problem. But we voted as a council to get rid of them. We did offer the school um, to give it to them. The one that's up there is something, is one that can be just hooked to a truck with a trailer hitch on it that they can take. And I believe the school even turned that down because I do know the high school has a recycling uh, club. I don't know how active they are nowadays, but I thought that would, would be a good um, gesture for them, but I believe, Randy, they even turned that down. We just haven't pulled away from that site. I would um, I, I'm not going, I'm not going to change my view on that because eventually the people who are dumping at our other sites will figure out that's open and they'll just go there and dump that. So unless the hospital can come up with a, uh, or the town, and this would be additional expense of monitoring that site, I, I would keep it open through the COVID uh, due to the fact we are getting. But um, I think we're gonna find that once people figure that out or the people, the usual suspects that used our other other drop-off points is just trash bins, they're gonna start using that as well.
I, I support yours and Ms. Sax's recommendation. I just bring that up uh, because it was uh, the issue was raised. But I support your, uh, yours and Ms. Sax's recommendation on that either way. Thank you.
I'd recommend Randy reach back out to the uh, MCPS to see if they'd be willing to accept our offer of giving, giving them that uh, trailer for free.
I, I don't think we actually formally offered. I think we mentioned it to them as a possibility, but I don't think we formally offered.
Okay, well, I'd like to see you formally offer it.
Yes.
I had a discussion with um, Dr. Myers just briefly and I do not believe they were interested.
Okay. Okay, all right. Very good. Anything else to come before council? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Very productive meeting. Uh, we will meet again when we meet again. So then we are adjourned.